Regular meeting of the Westmont Village Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, June 12th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Berry?
Here.
Commissioner Scales is absent this evening. Commissioner Lavoy?
Here.
Commissioner Zakary?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson is here, and Chairperson Carmichael?
Here. We have a quorum. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And while you're standing, anyone who's going to testify tonight has to be sworn in. So please, budding staff, please swear that any and all testimony that you give tonight will be the entire truth. So help you God. Thank you. And another reminder, any and all phones and other devices, please silence. And I noticed you signing in. John, did you sign in? So everyone who's going to testify has signed in. Adam, are you going to testify?
I'm not.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 8th, 2024 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Zakary.
Second, Thomas.
Is there any discussion on the minutes for the previous meeting? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakary?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. And for the public, we'd quickly review the public hearing procedures. First, we would introduce the applicant or the petitioner. The petitioner would then present his or her case, followed by staff comments, followed by commissioner comments, and then a vote. And a reminder that the votes of this commission are recommendations only to the village board. We don't have final authority. The elected officials do. See, we have no old business. We'll go right to new business. Under PZC 0122024, we have a request from the village of Westmont regarding the property at 109 North Cass Avenue in Westmont for a temporary public park. The two items first is a special use permit, request for a public and governmental use, that is a temporary public park. Secondly, a site and landscape plan approval. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Jonathan Yader. I'm the supervisor of forestry and grounds for Westmont Public Works. We recently purchased 109 North Cass Avenue, last year demoed the property. It is currently a, basically a flat site of all turf, so just green grass. And I know there's future plans for the site, so what we're presenting to you tonight is plans essentially for a temporary use park. There won't be any real permanent fixtures, nothing that can't be rid of quickly. And all the stuff we're using to go into this park is essentially recycled or repurposed materials. So cost is going to be considerably lower. What we're looking to do for this site, any way you can hit a plan up?
Yeah, I can pull up.
What we're planning to do for the site, again, as a temporary site, is just make it something usable until the properties within the vicinity are essentially developed, which I would assume this one would be as well. I don't know, and we don't know what temporary is ever for real, but I think it'd be a great use of this site in the interim, even if it's a year, a couple of years, whatever that may be. Promoting essentially just a walking path, a kid's play area, a little shade area, and a lot of basically planting similar to what else you see down in the central business district. So a lot of flowers, a lot of show, a lot of pot, just a usable, nice usable area, real simple design. Again, and I think it'd be great for any of the businesses to come down there and take advantage of, any customers that are waiting, street fairs, Taste of Westmont. You know, I see it being a highly used area just because it's right in the heart of the central business district. Again, temporary permit or temporary site plan, not a whole lot of investment, a lot of time to go into it, but I think when all is said and done, again, I think it'll be a very valuable site for the village.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Thank you, commissioners. So this property is just north of the public parking lot at 109 North Cass. Just to give you an idea, the site itself is about 9,000 square feet, 60 feet in length, 150 in depth. So it's a relatively smaller site than many of the larger ones in the downtown. To the north, we have a photography studio and some dwelling units. And then, as I said, to the south, we have the parking, and then some inner service uses around it, as well as some retail as well, because it is in that central business district. Now, the request from the village for this property is to use it, as we said, as a public park, a temporary public park, largely to facilitate the larger events Westmont holds. Within the zoning code, the zoning code requires a special use permit for public and governmental uses, which includes parks and other utilities when these sites are on a private property. So that's where we have to go through this process, is to gain approval for a special use, even though it's a temporary use. As John stated, they see this as a temporary use for the community benefit and event purposes. Once the area is ready to be redeveloped along that whole frontage, this use will no longer be in play. So this shouldn't be viewed as, a park will always be here, like some of our plazas we have along Quincy. This really is just to facilitate this transition period for that property, so we don't have a vacant site sitting in the middle of our central business district. John's worked with a variety of staff and different entities within the village, such as Westmont Special Events, the Park District, and the Chamber, to see what sites would work best. They narrowed it down to this particular property. John provided some of the special, or all of the required special use standards in his narrative piece that's attached, and within the findings of fact that you all have here. Now, getting into the site itself, they're reutilizing a lot of material that they have left over from Public Works, as well as some of the Park District's materials. You'll notice, such as the archway was part of some of the other projects within town, that are no longer there and sitting in storage. Within the B1 district, oh, sorry, the site itself will have like a limestone path, as you can see, with some picnic tables, shaded structures. They will likely be using a playground of some kind within the rear end of the property along the alleyway, and they'll have access along Cass Avenue for pedestrians. The B1 district, as we've talked about before, doesn't have parking requirements for these type of uses. However, there's that village own lots to the south that has about 25 parking spaces that could be utilized in conjunction with the park. So there's ample parking in the nearby radius for this type of use. So that's all I have for this. I'm happy to go through some of the special use standards as asked, or any other questions.
All right, thank you. And for the public, I apologize when I was reviewing the public hearing procedures. After staff is not, the commissioners, after the staff comments, is the opportunity for the public to weigh in. So at this time, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the commission on this agenda item? Good evening.
Can I have it?
Please.
Awesome, thanks.
So I saw you sign in.
Yeah, I did.
All we need is your name.
Yeah, my name's Charlie Fori. So I'm partners with Delaney here. She has Westmont Photography, and she allows for me to host some of my artwork in there. So I'm here to bring creative energy and blossom the Westmont community. And so I'm fully in support of the park there. I think it's such a fantastic opportunity to bring people downtown.
So for the public to understand, you are the neighbor just to the north of the park?
Correct, yeah.
Your photography studio.
Yeah, definitely. And so, yeah, we're thrilled for the opportunity to be able to have that right there, to foster in a lot of the people downtown, and to be able to build that community up. And so it's really exciting, I think, for everyone, just because from my perspective, it is a very central communal area that's open, that's on downtown Main Street. So I think that's a very unique opportunity for gatherings of people, whether it's for social events or for different types of community events, whether that be food trucks, or different types of farmers markets, or wherever it may be. It's really cool just to see that blossom and grow. And so, wholeheartedly, I'm excited for it, and yeah, I'm just really thrilled for the community to continue to blossom.
All right, well, thanks for your input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission? No? Seeing no one, we'll go to the commissioners. And Commissioner Berry, would you like to start?
Yeah, great idea, great idea. I don't know why it's in the ordinance that the village would have to come here, and you'd have to spend an evening to do this. I don't know why, they just don't do it, but I understand the legality of it. But to me, it's a no-brainer, and we should already be breaking ground on it and doing it. I like the whole plan and the fact that, I know when you do these things, John, you are conservative as far as the village's money and so forth. So it's great that we're using it. And to staff, the last development that we did like this, we sat on 20 years. So temporary can be a long time, you know? So I like the idea, if it does stay like that for 20 years, it's something to look at. So I'm all for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy?
Yeah, I just have a few questions. And it's related to the landscape plan that's in front of us tonight.
Yes, sir.
Two things. One is, just because of the history, our ordinance for trees, and that's pretty stringent, as you know, this property was demolished. And if we put material here, is what you're proposing on this landscape plan consistent with our own ordinances in relation to what was there before? In other words, there were trees there before, and now they're gone, and now you're going to put this back? Or are you, do we have to abide by what was there before?
So to answer that-
Or the demo happened to, because now, you know, we've done this on other parcels in town, and we have trees that we're removing, and we have to put back so many more trees because we took a tree down. Well, here, we took trees down, and now we're putting these trees back. And I just want to know if we're, is that part of our ordinance requirements to do that?
It is, and I love the question. I'm glad you're interested in that. And to answer that, they're actually, the old Toon Funeral Home site, which this is, had zero trees on it. It was almost, well, basically 100% impervious surface.
Okay, so the trees are actually on that parking lot, which is next to it?
Village. There's no current trees on that lot. There is-
Yeah, so the-
A few trees in the parking lot.
That parking lot, yes. Okay, so that, those will remain?
Yeah, yeah, these will be in addition to-
Okay, so we're not going to, we're not violating anything that we, you know, of our own?
No, and in honesty, just to answer that, because you mentioned other projects, we haven't in the past. When we come in and we purchase a lot for, you know, whatever it is, parking lot or otherwise, we still abide by our own ordinances.
Yeah, yeah.
We, as a village, plant about 300 trees a year on average. Sometimes it's a little higher, sometimes it's a little lower. But per ordinance, we just updated that ordinance, but it was still requiring 50% replacement of what's removed on site. So we're well above and beyond what our own requirements are.
Because you don't think of that, when you go look at the case now, it's a vacant piece.
Right.
Well, all that other stuff that was there was demoed, and, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't-
No, yeah, I love that. And yeah, for this one in particular, there were no trees on site.
Okay. And then my second question is, does it make sense to even have pedestrian access to the alley?
Um, we didn't think so, and that's why we kind of surrounded it. One, to keep it kind of barrier'd from the alley, but two, there isn't any business or anything back there. It's all residential, unless you're just driving through.
I kind of looked at it two different ways. One, it would be great to have parking back there along the alley, but then I thought, well, no, we got a parking lot right next to it.
Correct.
And even though we need a lot of parking downtown, I mean, that would be a consideration, but that's not what's in front of us. But the other way that I looked at it is if we have a park there, we have traffic in the alley, does it make sense then to, you know, if we have traffic in the alley going up and down north and south in the alley, we have a park right there, does it make sense to put a temporary fence up there too, or not?
We're looking to put the barrier, essentially a barrier fence of shrubs, as you see in the plan.
Yeah.
To be that essentially barrier fence. We'll likely put in some larger boulder-type stuff as additional barrier material.
I just wouldn't want to see a young child like Dart over there, and then there's traffic in the alley, and-
Yeah, for sure. And we understand that concern. That was actually brought up considerably in discussions while we're designing this.
Hey, at least you know we look at the stuff.
Not saying that everybody abides by it, but the speed limit in the alley is five miles an hour. With that being said, the parking lot is just to the south.
Whatever, yeah.
That turn is really hard to make, because if you, if you haven't been there in a while, it's a steep incline coming off of Irving Street, and it goes up into the fresh, brand-new brick alley.
Yeah.
There's curves on each side, definitely not enough room to have parking. Our right-of-ways in the alley are 16 feet wide.
No, I'm saying, you know, my original thought when I, my first pass at this, when I first got the package, was does it make sense off of the alley into this piece, shifting that park area over 20 feet? Is it going to impact the use? Is it going to impact what you plan on doing with the temporary park, but adds park spaces back there?
Oh, you're saying parking space in the rear of the lot itself?
Off the alley.
I got you. We did not consider that, because we're just trying to maximize the green space. Plus, with parking requirements, village and things, that really beefs up the price tag to build it.
Well, you would be under the impervious requirement. So it might, and if it's temporary, maybe there's issues within the code would allow that to happen. I know that some people that are really, one of the main key points here in town is the lack of parking. So that could be an opportunity, but I'm not going to-
Oh, very understandable. And I can't speak to the parking requirements.
Yeah, so like I said, in the B1, we have none for these type of uses.
Right.
That was done-
I'm just saying, does it make sense?
Two or three years ago. I, yeah, I understand. I think it's more of a cost-effective measure, because they realized it was going to be temporary in nature, so you would have to go back and then demo it.
I'm with Harold. Temporary becomes years.
Can be.
Yep.
So anyway, I have no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Zakary?
No questions. Love the idea. Glad the park is, you know, obviously not set on Cass, so good idea there. Yeah, I think it's great. No other comments, I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas?
What I thought right away about my playground is kids running in and out, you know, and you have Cass Avenue right there, and then I got to pack it, and I saw the rear, the plants in that barrier, you know? And I was wondering, but the park, but the playground is back away from Cass.
Well, off of Cass Avenue, yes.
So plus, I was talking to staff, you have the sidewalk too, and you have that. I like the idea. I would vote for it.
Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Peterson?
I absolutely, positively love this idea. As a matter of fact, my son and I, last year, talked about, that's what we, the village needs to do here. Personally, I think you might need to add some more benches, though. I think this will be very utilized, I mean, especially during events, but even during non-events. So once this gets done, you know, we'll have to keep an eye on if it, because there's no benches anywhere downtown to sit, just go sit. So hopefully, there'll be some more free benches that if it's going to be crowded all the time, we can get some more benches in there.
So there's a few more than you can see, just to mention that. So the shade shelter actually covers up a number of the benches right here.
Okay.
So they'll either be benches or picnic tables.
Oh, okay.
Along with the three benches to the north of that.
Okay.
So there's a few more, but I agree. I think potentially with the site usage, we can adapt to that and see what other needs there will be moving forward with it after it's established for a little bit.
And what, I don't know what an organic play space is, organic play space. Is that just an empty space, or is it, I don't?
Essentially, so when you think about your traditional park, large, and these days, large plastic and rubber equipment, slides and big things, metal poles, organic play space is more natural. So you're talking logs the kids can jump up on and jump down on, cookie-cut logs that they can, you know, you make a line of them, and they can, again, jump around, just something for them to burn energy.
Real logs?
I wish I had some examples. I thought we, I know I included a bunch in our initial discussions when we were discussing this.
So kind of like the Bee Place?
Richmond Gardens?
Yeah, with the logs and stuff, or no?
No, no, completely different. This will be more of an active space for, geared towards children.
Okay.
I can, I can probably give you some examples-
No, that's okay.
Just real quick on-
I wasn't aware of that terminology. I know it's kind of like new terminology. Are you talking about real logs?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, real, and actually, there's one that I found that's, it's actually artificial, but it's something the kids can actually go on.
Go through.
You know, probably yay-high with a large hole through the middle of it, so they can kind of-
So there's not going to be any swing sets or, okay, no, actually, I think that's cooler, but no, I love the idea, I can't wait. Are you guys, if this all gets approved, is it in the plan to start this right away?
It depends on the direction of the board.
Okay.
If they want the site to be temporarily unusable through some car shows, so we can get it finished before the Taste, which is really tight, given just the dates of these meetings. So we may actually end up waiting until after the Taste to get to it.
Okay, I can't wait. I absolutely love it. Great job, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, my only question would be, who's going to maintain this? Is it Public Works going to maintain it, or is the Park District going to be?
Public Works.
Public Works will maintain it.
Yeah, as a village of Westmont.
There'll be trash containers.
Correct.
And, okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, you know, to make another comment, I think that this being a park downtown, it's unique, there's no other place downtown, really. When you look at the whole streetscape, it relieves a lot of, you know, the buildings right on the sidewalk, and it creates more of an open feeling as you walk past the site, to have the site open. And, yeah, to use it as a park is a good thing.
Well, I think as Commissioner Peterson said, the special events, you know, there's just never a place to go, like, sit down and enjoy, you know, Taste, I always think of, and not that there's not a place, but maybe you want just a little more calm, and I really like the idea. And as I was looking it up, it looks like that Toon had about 10 by 10 area of grass there, as far as, you know, water retention and so forth. This looks like a, superior to what was existing there prior. I mean, the picture looks like Toon almost used every square inch of it for concrete and building. So again, environmentally, everything, it looks like a great project. Thank you.
And as far as the organic play space, I know I shared a file with you, Scott, on a handful of different concepts and just examples of that. And if you can't find it, I'll share it with you again. If you can share with the commission, just for their information.
I'd be happy to.
I was just in Texas, and similar type of play space. We were on, we took a little family trip, and it's like, there was like a big boulder, a hill, a ladder from the top of the hill that the kids could climb on. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know if anybody else has, young kids here, but I have three kids four and under, so I think it's a great idea.
Well, thank you. And I, you know, would emphasize, the primary word in this is temporary. This is not a permanent, but-
Not yet.
Like the tollway, just like the tollway, temporary.
Yeah, it's-
So the chair would entertain a motion to approve, under public hearing, PZC 0122024, a special use permit for a public and governmental use, temporary public park.
Motion, Zakary.
Second, Berry.
Second, Thomas. We have motion, Zakary, second, Berry.
Second, who?
Berry. And discussion questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Zakary?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
And Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. And secondly, motion to approve site and landscape plan approval?
Motion, Zakary.
Second, Berry.
Sorry.
Second, Berry. Discussion, seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Zakary?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson votes yes. Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lavoy?
Yes.
Chairperson Carmichael?
Yes. Thank you, John, for your presentation, and there you have it. I guess you'll be contacted by the board when this will be scheduled and the staff-
I can let you know. It will be on the village board for tomorrow night, for anybody in the audience that would like to go to that meeting.
Yeah.
I thank you all for your time and your consideration in this, and as residents, thank you for your insight as well. It's always appreciated. You all have a great night. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Next item on the agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anyone from the public to have public comment on any matter of public concern that is not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone here who would like to address the commission? Seeing none, no one. I'm going to close the public hearing, and the next item on the agenda under miscellaneous is a general update for a discussion, for a zoning ordinance update. This item is not a public hearing, and it's therefore, public comment will not be permitted. But anyone here, and the TV audience, of course, are invited to listen to our discussion. When this process proceeds over the months, and they will finally get to a point for approval, then public discussion or public input will be encouraged. So staff, would you start on this?
Yes, thank you, commissioners. So I gave some minor updates to what we've been doing. We have a consultant now, working for the village, to do a comprehensive zoning ordinance update. So back in April of 2023, we reached an agreement with Duncan Associates as our third-party consultant for the, to perform the village zoning ordinance update. They've done a lot of work so far, meeting with constituents and residents to gain insight about what works and doesn't work in the zoning code. They've spoken with staff, and now they've actually spoken at, I believe, three community development committee meetings. Those are committees of the whole, to gain input on general and larger topics for the rewrite itself. We're now getting into a phase where we are looking at very specific things, and that's where the Planning and Zoning Commission comes in. As you know, we ask you for your input on these items. The village board looks to you to do a lot of the heavy lifting for the specifics on these type of things, while they look at a lot of the larger topics, and they trust a lot of your guidance, as well as staff's. So that's why we're having this discussion tonight. You'll likely see, basically, from now until adoption, or until the public hearing portion, we'll be coming with discussion topics on specific items. We may have the consultant come in for those as well, to give insight, but staff will be looking at, we're looking at historical precedent for items to make changes to, as well as what this commission wants in the future. Now, this isn't getting into a lot of the other parts of the municipal code, I want to reiterate. So we're not talking a lot about like land development code, subdivision code- So we're not talking a lot about like land development code, subdivision code, things like that. We're looking only at the planning and zoning, or the zoning ordinance itself. That's the Appendix A in the municipal code. So we have some limited scope in that. But tonight, we are discussing accessory structures and buildings. Is it going to be the main topic? So we have, as we've seen recently, we've had variances come through for garages, fences, and of the like. Now, variances specifically doesn't mean that the zoning ordinance needs to change because of that, or a tax amendment needs to be processed for those variances or anything. But when there's some type of pattern for what we're approving, and also what we get inquiries from residents about, let's say, having a larger garage or a different type of fencing, staff notes that we look to see if our current code accommodates it, and if that's something we're getting a lot of, we'll mark it down, maybe look at it as a tax amendment. In this case, for the zoning ordinance update, we're just looking at, this is the time to update everything, so we need to be looking at everything and going back through our history to see what we've done in the past. So tonight, we're looking for general input, but also we can get into specifics on a variety of topics staff has looked at, and we've talked with residents about and get inquiries on through permitting and the such. So for tonight, accessory structures and buildings is in our Section 4.05. I've listed and provided a memo to everybody about the general guidelines and regulations. It's not everything related to these, so that you have that on hand about our current and existing code. We have not had our consultant dig deep into this specific section because we wanted to provide them with what the commission would like prior for them to do that particular draft of the ordinance. They've worked on everything else, basically, but this portion, it still needs fine tuning because we need direction. So just getting into it directly, we've had detached garages recently come up for variances in the past few years. We get inquiries pretty constantly about how large a garage can be, and people wanting larger garages. But I'm going to go through first for what we allow within the village. So for detached garages specifically, we're not looking at attached garages tonight or anything. Detached garages are considered buildings in our, accessory buildings in our ordinance. They're limited in size to 576 square feet. They can't be larger than 28 feet in length, and they have some other requirements depending on where they're placed in the yard for setbacks. So in the R3 district, which I'm primarily looking at because it has most of our single-family homes on it, they have a 30% area requirement for rear yards, so they can't take up a lot of the land in the rear as lot coverage. They have to observe the side yard is joining a street requirement, so when there's a corner lot, they have to observe the bulk requirement, which is usually 35 feet, but can be as close as 25 feet in some cases. In the R3 district, they have a requirement of five feet from the rear and then three feet from the side property lines, and then they have to be farther than 10 feet from another accessory building or the primary building. They can be, they're able to encroach on the side rear yards based on those limited requirements, the three feet and five feet, and then they are not allowed to exceed 50 feet in height. So that's our existing code. Now, I've gone back through our variances, back till 1985, I believe, is how far my stats go to, and I had it here. We've had 18 garage variances for size and setbacks. Or, sorry, we had 18 garage variances total, and a large portion of that have been sizes, about 10 of them have been for size, and then eight of them for setbacks. So what we're looking at is, are we in line with surrounding communities? We had our new plan to look at surrounding communities to see if we're either limiting or we actually allow more or not. But we're just trying to get general feedback from the commission if we want to look at increasing those sizes, allowing closer, or we want more restrictive setbacks, and also looking at heights as well. So I'm going to open it up for discussion. I have some other stuff I can talk about for general points if people have questions, such as, how big is generally a garage for two cars and storage and stuff like that? We can get into those details if you would like.
Okay, let's just have this be a group discussion as opposed to me calling on individuals.
So are we talking, just to be clear, specifically just about garages?
Garages right now.
Any others?
Yeah.
Accessory structures?
Not at this moment.
Okay.
We can get into all of them tonight, as you like. Obviously, time, depending on how the commission wants to work.
Yeah. I mean, I would be interested, do you have the data for other neighboring?
I do.
Towns? Just to, I think that's maybe a good starting point.
So there are a few towns within the area, sorry, that shits. For detached garage specifically, that allow more. So generally, what I've seen in the surrounding communities, such as Glen Allen, La Grange, and I think Downers allow larger sizes compared to us, they're at about 660 square feet, which generally allows for two cars and some storage of trash bins and other things in that size range. Other municipalities have done it on a percentage-based. So if your lot is X percent large in area, your garage can be a certain percentage up to maximum limit. And I know with some of the variance requests, we've looked at their lot size as being somewhat unique, so.
Yeah, I kind of agree with that one. I don't think you could make it just standard for all the zoning districts and all the Because we have some tiny lots in town, you know, and if you say, oh, anybody in, you know, R3 can build this big of a garage, there's going, you know, even though they have to abide by the lot coverage.
The percentage ones work out really well because, that's why Downers Grove has it, so you don't end up with bigger garages than you have houses. And we have that a lot in Westmont because half of these are still from the Depression. You know, they're so small, you could have a three-car garage and the house is only 400 square feet. So that's where the percentage in a town like Westmont really works well, because a guy like me would do that. You know, I could live in an 800-square-foot house and put a 2,000-square-foot garage up. You know what I mean? That's a country boy's dream. So that's what I think we want to avoid, though, is that, you know, having bigger garages. I think we have that situation on Adams and Park over here, on some of those deep lots. You know, there's some, some pretty big garages that were, you know, I think were varied, variances to do them, but bigger than the houses.
So would you be thinking, and I'm just spitballing, so feel free to say, no, not that at all, but would you be thinking it'd be based on, like, the floor area of the house itself rather than the lot itself?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But I think Jill's point is very valid, too, that, you know, you don't want a giant garage on a, on a small lot.
Yeah.
I feel as a village, we should follow most, everything that Downers Grove does. You know, when I look at Glen Allen, that doesn't, that's not a border community that we see, you know, on the up. La Grange is not a border community. So I really look to Downers Grove a lot for guidance, because I've looked at the job that they're doing there, and, you know, they're doing an excellent job, from their downtown to their flood control, so I've kind of, I copy them a lot.
Do the, do the towns that are doing percentage, are they doing it percentage of lot or of the?
I think we've seen both. Largely, they do it based on the square footage of the house, though. Seems to be more in line.
I'm thinking, we have 300-foot deep lots, and we have lots that are half of that. And so, I was, is it FAR, percentage of the house or the percentage of the lot, which would be a big difference?
Correct. So what happens in some of those scenarios is they, they're almost forced to do an addition. So they'll combine them, they'll say, okay, well then we'll throw a dormer on the house. We'll throw an addition on the house so we can do our garage, and sometimes we, you know, we create more for the village that way. So I know, again, I go to Downers Grove, I just did a project, that's what the man had to do to get his garage. He had to do an addition to get his square footage up on his house, then he could build the garage he wanted to run his business out of it.
So to give insight on the Downers Grove one, just because I have it here, it says, basically, it cannot exceed 1,000 square feet in total size, and then they base on the gross floor area of the principal structure, whichever is less in that case. So can, they have a maximum limit of 1,000, or they base it directly on the square footage, so.
And then, just like us, though, here in Westmont, you can go as tall as you want, then, right? To a certain extent, I mean, that's how we, if I was building a garage, that's how I get around it, right? Like our park commissioner and so forth, where they put a big dormer on it and they go up, right? I mean, that's how.
Yeah, it's, I'd say it's a little different for the park district ones, but for residential, we do have a height limit of 15 feet. And it depends on the type of roof, obviously, and that type of thing.
But then you can dormer those out, right?
Generally, yeah.
Right. Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of them around town where they, you know the ones I'm referring to, Jill, that have really maximized them.
I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but I am in favor of raising the height. I personally like that style garage, and I, you could do it for living space, and I know in the code they're talking about that.
Yeah, I won't get into it tonight.
Right.
So that we had a joint discussion at CDC about ADUs, is what they're called.
Right. But not so much that, but I mean, just to have a garage that had a higher attic, like if you were going to not live up there, you know, or make a spare room.
Storage.
I mean, you could have that option, but for storage, where you could walk up there, like in my garage attic, I have to crawl around on my hands and knees, you know, because it's like this. I think that would be more beneficial to the homeowners.
Well, not only that, Jill, but architecturally.
Looks better.
You know, when you're restricted to 15 feet, you can't do a dormer, you can't really do a good roofline, it's really restrictive.
Yeah, and so I don't know.
But there again, I think you'd have to put in there not to exceed the house. You know, you can't have a house that's only got a 15-foot roofline, and then the garage is going to have a 20.
See, I don't, my mind doesn't think in the correlation of the size of the house versus the size of the garage, what?
People that have smaller houses might want to build a garage.
Okay, but why is that, like, not a good thing? Or why would we say no?
It becomes very inviting.
The higher it goes, you're going to have shadows under the neighbor's property, it's more impacting the neighbor, I think, is why you have the height restrictions.
More than anything else, maybe.
And what we've seen here in Westmont so often is it invites business.
That's my biggest fear.
You know, it, myself included, I've tinked, you know, 20 years ago, you could have done that. We have contractors that do that here in town. You know, you buy a small little house, build a big garage, you can get that cheaper than any commercial property around, and then you could, you're up and running. You know, you don't have to pay commercial cable, no fire alarms, no, 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 you know, and that list keeps going on. So that's one of the reasons that, you know, we've had mechanics, you know, operate, we've, and so I think that's where the crackdown in the 80s, maybe, was when they, they kind of said, hey, we're going to have a community here of businesses on our residential areas.
Right.
And so I think that is.
That is my fear, but I don't see, I think it would be beneficial to the residents in the village to let you have a little bit bigger.
West End has a couple of examples like that. My first home was 5 West End. It was 660 square feet. I believe I built an 800-square-foot garage. You know, the peak, it sits taller, it kind of dwarfs the house, really, the garage does, you know? And, of course, I sold that to a single man who's a contractor, you know what I mean? So there is, there's that appeal out there for it, but 1 West End and 5 West End are very similar that way, where 1 West End, which is on the tracks, has a big garage, it has a separate shed, and then it has a little house. So to me, it, 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 it looks more like it's become a storage area than it is a resident, and then it's on Burlington and the tracks, you know? So I think ultimately that should be a concern of ours.
I would agree with that. I mean, I have that across the street from my house, somebody running a business basically on a large lot. There's not a, it's not a garage thing, it's just same thing. I would want to invite less businesses in the residential, so I agree with Harold around some sort of restriction, raising it, but also to not exceed. And I don't really know what that number is, perhaps the consultant could look at.
So, yeah, I think, so our bulk center's 35 feet is how high, how high a primary structure can be in the R3 district specifically. So if we would do that, we would be putting in like clause basically saying, it can go up to a certain height, maybe not 35 feet, but a certain height, but may not exceed the height of the primary structure. That's how it would read.
I could live with that.
Going along that, I'm going to ask a question. So we have, in our current code, code for the R3 district, for side yards, interior side yards, it's a three-foot setback for these. If they were to exceed a certain height, would we want them to now have further setbacks from the, from the property line, such as the house, houses are required to be six feet? So if they cross a certain threshold in height, should we push them back farther to be more internal? We did talk about impacts to neighboring properties with heists, that's why I'm bringing that up. Or do we feel that those setbacks that are currently there, three feet on the side and five to the rear, are acceptable?
I don't think we should mess with setbacks. It's, the community's hard enough to develop as it is. You know, we hear that constantly, so I don't think we want to mess with setbacks, you know? I just don't.
I don't think it makes that big of a difference if you would move it, you know, if it's going to be a certain height, whether it's two feet back or two feet forward.
I think the real, the most difficult challenge that we have, that you have, is taking a piece of the code and rewriting it, and now we have other things in the other codes that if we rewrite this, we're in conflict with other things within the code. That's the problem. You know, when you don't do the whole thing, we may change this, and all of a sudden, the FAR is violated by what we write in the new, what we've made new. So that's really the challenge, is when you want to make changes, what conflicts are we creating? So that's what I would be concerned about.
Well, isn't that the purpose of this, these people we hired?
Correct, that's why.
Put it together so it doesn't happen.
True, but what I'm saying is, we're looking at just a piece of the municipal code, and we have other chapters within that code that would create potential conflicts with what we rewrite.
We've got lot coverage requirements.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Allowing larger accessory structures means more lot coverage, which could, if you want a larger accessory structure, it means a smaller house.
Right, right.
You can't build what you want without a variance, so there's that, and certainly we'll do our best to cross-check.
That's, that's the problem, is the.
It's a problem with our code now.
It is, and we're not going to make it go away by just redoing a piece of it.
It's so much bigger. It's so much bigger than, and it goes to when we started to hire this guy. If anyone watches Parks and Recreation, okay, I'm Ron, all right? I'm Ron all the way, if you haven't picked that up already. But the thing, this is government waste at its biggest, because any one of these that comes to us is going to come here for a variance, and we're going to look at them individually anyways. To me, a situation like this, the guy who's doing this, this thing makes it, makes out like a bandit, okay? We make a bunch of little tweaks, just as we're saying here now, they're going to be individually looked at anyways. So to me, this, anytime, this goes from my time serving as a trustee, I don't care if it's a survey on the railroad tracks, it becomes, the guys who do it make out the best. You know, I mean, what major changes are, like, just as you said, without rewriting the whole code, these tweaks, it just, I don't see where it's going.
Are they, or are they not rewriting the whole code?
So what we have.
They're rewriting the whole code.
So for this purpose, for what we're talking about tonight, Appendix A, which is the zoning ordinance in its entirety, is going to have a major overhaul and update. It's not going to look the same as it is today. Those other sections, such as land development code, are not being touched with this. It's not within the scope, scope of the RFP that was provided. Other things along the pipeline when we get, for funding and things like that, such as the comprehensive plan, will come at a later time. But other portions of municipal code that some staff don't have jurisdiction over would not be changed, other than.
The problem with codes in general is they have to be enforced, okay? There's a code right now that says we cannot block the sidewalks and park with your car, okay? You could not walk three blocks here and not have that violated. You could not walk three blocks here and not have that violated, okay? There's heights for parkways, for plantings, those are violated. People are putting sheds up everywhere. The codes have to be enforced. We can change these codes and waste staff's time and hire all the services we want, but if we don't enforce the codes, we're just wasting taxpayers' money. And that's what frustrates me. That's the part that gets to me, is that, you know, we, seems like ultimately, this guy's going to make a lot of money on this, and we're going to make the changes that we want to make anyways. And each one of them's going to handle, be handled on an individual basis if somebody wants a variance anyways.
I think it's a little bit beyond that, in my personal opinion. First, I think it's more than a tweak. I think it's, as Scott described it, a comprehensive overhaul. It's not every single section, but it's a lot of the major sections. And it's not just establishing standards, like tonight, we're talking about accessory structures. What we found in working with our zoning ordinance, which dates back originally to 1979, has been amended in a piecemeal fashion, is that we have very poor regulations for accessory structures, and they're somewhat limiting, and they could be improved. And so that's what this consultant is trying to do. We have a section on planning unit developments. It's wholly substandard. It's a pain to deal with. Developers don't understand it. Staff can't enforce it the way they would like to or interpret it. So that's going to be blown up and rewritten. I think it's going to be a benefit to the village.
That's how.
The B2, B1, C1 zoning list, we have like 189 individual uses listed. A lot of communities list uses by categories of businesses, rather than list taxidermy and shoe shine company and, you know, every single use. And that's a lot easier for staff to interpret. So I think a lot of these amendments are going to help in the long run. It'll help staff and the public when it comes time to reading, understanding, interpreting the zoning ordinance, because there are a lot of flaws. I agree, enforcement's important, whatever we create, but I do think this is needed, and it's more than just like little tweaks here, little tweaks there.
And to add to that, in our comprehensive plan for 2013, which may be somewhat out of date at this point, called for an override, overwrite of the current zoning ordinance and to update it, because of when it was adopted, it's piecemealed together. There's implementations from other code sections that we would like not to be in the specific zoning ordinance, because it's not really in the zoning's purview, such as construction standards for fencing shouldn't be in the zoning ordinance itself, that should be in the building codes. So those type of things are littered throughout the code. Cleaning up that is part of what the consultant's doing. Additionally, they're also looking at adding districts of the such, so some bigger items that will be brought to you at some point. So it's really a cleanup. We want to get specifics, so we can move forward for telling what the contracted out person should do moving forward with specific items. That's why the discussions are happening regarding these. They've gotten some general feedback from CDC to move forward with those larger general items that affect a lot of businesses in town and other residents as well. So that's why we're coming here with a very narrow focus, and that's what likely we kept bringing is narrow focus, so we can tell the commissioner that this is what planning and zoning wants. We don't want people coming in asking for variances for anything above this. When we look at the ordinance, we want to be able to say confidently, this is what the village wants. We don't want anybody going past this point. So that's what we're looking at. We want to be able to streamline it and be confident in what we're doing on our end.
Just still be able to request a variance, correct?
Yes, variances can still be requested. Every homeowner and resident has the right to do so. Again, they have to meet those standards. Some processes will change in this ordinance from what we're looking at with the consultant, but yes, variances will still be processed as they normally would.
Accessory structures, are they talking anything about what sheds can be, what, 144?
So, well, I have more to get to.
Oh, okay.
So I have some specific items listed where staff has had issues with in the past, or it's not clear to us about how to regulate it and enforce it. So for now, regarding the detached garages, it sounded like we are in favor of increasing what we currently offer to residents in size, be that height, area as well, keeping similar setbacks what we have now, and maybe having it based on a percentage basis of either the lot or the primary structure itself.
Primary structure.
Primary structure.
Yeah, and just, does that affect, in this bullet one, have a coverage of not more than 30% area of the rear yard? The way, the percentage calculation on the garage versus the main structure?
So the, the, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the rear yard is a very specific zoning term. It's basically, in most R3 districts, it's 20% of the property width, starting from the rear property line, and moving up. So it's not what you would consider like your normal backyard, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So generally, the primary structure shouldn't be there. Now, there are many in town where that's not the case. They're actually planted directly in there, especially in this downtown area. Those are considered non-conformities, that type of thing, so. But 30% is the lot coverage for the rear yard. We will likely be talking to the consultant to see if other communities have those similar requirements. It seems like they do for rear yards and corner lots largely.
The garage can't be more than 30% of the.
I think it's not just the garage, it's anything that is like lot coverage wise, so it's asphalt, the garage, any sheds back there. Shouldn't take up more than that.
Isn't, is ours, is this our land use? Isn't ours, is ours 30 or 35% in the village?
35, for the R3 district specifically.
Got it. So that, this is calling out something different?
Correct, yeah. It's more restrictive for things in the rear yard specifically.
Understood.
Yeah. So is that generally the direction I'm getting for the detached garages?
If you're taller.
Well, probably institute some type of height limit that's not just the bulk standard, you go up to 35 feet.
15 feet, that's nutty, yeah.
Maybe basing it off what the primary structures is, it could be no higher.
Got a question for John. Does it make sense, based on what we talked about before, to, is, from a legal perspective, if we're doing a portion of the code that is in conflict, which takes precedence? Like if we change something in the code that would create a conflict elsewhere, to give staff directive on which one would apply? Does it make sense to do that?
Generally, if that happens, if we find a clear conflict, we're going to come in front of you for text amendment, saying we need to rectify this conflict. Otherwise, if you have, the general rule of construction is if you have a very specific ordinance, then a more general ordinance, the more specific one's going to control in the event of a conflict.
Do we have that language in the ordinance?
That's kind of evolved through case law, through court.
Right, but is that something that we should put in the code?
No, because the idea is to try and avoid conflicts like that.
I know, but still, we still are going to have it no matter what.
I think in regard to like the rest of municipal code, staff will be going through each portion of the municipal code to make sure there's no conflicts. For example, we're changing some of the fees and language of the fees, so I will have to go in and institute text amendment, which won't come to this commission, but would go straight to the village board, because it's the municipal code, to try to change those conflicts. Yeah. Other ones are in the subdivision code and, and the land development code.
Yeah.
So those, those we try to look over beforehand, so we know, not just the Appendix A and the zoning ordinance will be updated. We'll update those little sections that maybe tweaked minor language for, a lot of the code talks about a community economic development director, which we don't have one, we have a community development director. So changes like that, building commissioner versus zoning administrator, that type of thing. So there's, there is cleanup in other sections that relate to this, but it's not an overhaul of any of those sections.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to move on to, I believe my next topic is sheds, if I can find my paper. So in our current code, we do not list out sheds as a type of building, accessory building currently. They're listed under lawn buildings currently. Lawn, lawn buildings encapsulate things like greenhouses, sheds, sometimes pool houses. So it has a very loose definition in this case. One of the things we'd like to clean up is somewhat separate that out. One thing that is in our current code, and I would, I'm open to hearing opinions on this as well, is that currently, we only allow one additional accessory building, not just structure, but building, in addition to a detached garage. So you're allowed basically to have two accessory buildings on one property, and that's it. My first question generally is that something the commission's okay with, you don't want to increase that. It is somewhat in line with most other villages in the immediate area. Any thoughts on that specifically?
I don't want to increase it.
Well, so if a home had an attached garage, they could have two outbuildings?
So they could have, if they have an attached garage, in our current code, we have no, we have no regulations that they say they can't have a detached garage as well. They could have a detached garage as well, and then also a shed or greenhouse in addition. We have minimum or maximum requirements for those secondary accessory structures, sheds, lawn buildings, greenhouses, of the such, which is that it can't be larger than 144 square feet in the area currently.
I think if you have more stuff, like if you have a garage, you know, the max garage, the max shed, and you still need more room, you just have too much stuff. I don't think there's an issue with, I don't think I would personally like to see properties with a whole bunch of, I mean, like to have a shed and a greenhouse, that's fine, but I wouldn't want to see properties starting to pop up with two or three sheds, and I think.
I'd say staff doesn't get many questions on this particularly. So we don't get inquiries from residents. It's just something implemented in our code that I want to make sure that we're agreeing with to keep.
I feel like this could be like in just the one accessory building. I feel like this, I know we're not discussing it tonight, but I feel this kind of dovetails into an ADU type topic of how many should be allowed or permitted on a specific lot.
First, before we get into it.
Yeah.
ADUs, if anybody is not aware what they are, they're accessory dwelling units. They're typically, they've been called mother-in-law suites.
Granny flats.
Granny flats, of the such. Sometimes they're located on the second story of garages. Sometimes they're not even attached to the house whatsoever. They usually have an exterior exit, and they don't necessarily need to be accessed through the main structure. It would be normally rented out to family members, but we have had long discussions at CDC about it. We're a non-home rule community, so we have very little oversight on renters and things like that. So currently, we're having our consultants to look into it, because that was the direction CDC gave us for ADUs. But I agree, there is some overlap with that discussion.
Yeah, I feel like it's.
Accessory.
Yeah, I feel like it's hard to weigh in without knowing the direction on, you know, if they're going to ask us to weigh in on ADUs as well, because like, I'm not probably in the best position to comment one way or another without knowing whether or not ADUs are going to be something we're also going to be discussing, because it, I think, directly affects this.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
The square footage, that's 12 by 12.
Correct, yep.
I don't think we should have, it should be more than that. Somebody wants to have a shed, they have attached garage, and only wanted a shed. 12 by 12 is pretty small. So that's my, my feeling is the height and the square footage requirement is just too restrictive.
So in particular, you're thinking, if somebody has an attached garage, they have no need for detached garage, they should be able to have, exercise the right to have a larger shed?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you said that they shouldn't be able to have a garage?
No, if they don't, if they don't need one, so if they have an attached garage.
So like the new, the new construction job right now on Blackhawk, where they've built that new garage in the back.
For the.
They have an attached garage. You're saying that we shouldn't allow that?
No, I'm not, I'm not giving an opinion. I'm just saying, I'm trying to clarify what he's saying.
What I'm saying is that if you have, you're a resident, you have a, a single-family home at R3, and you have a two-car garage, but that's all you have is a two-car garage.
An attached garage.
An attached garage to the house, having a 12 by 12 shed, sometimes isn't big enough. That's what I'm saying. I mean, if you have to put your lawnmower, or a snow blower, or a bike, you know, 12 by 12 is not that big. I just think it's too restrictive.
You think it should be bigger?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And some of the sheds, sheds they sell like pre-made at Home Depot and stuff now are, are, are pretty large.
They're pretty large, yeah, you can get a pretty big, tough shed.
So when you say, like, again, you know, so much of this is laughable to me, because there's just no enforcement on it. But if you're saying you have a shed and a garage today, and a house, there's your three structures. No chicken coop?
You can have a chicken coop. So it's not just structures, it's buildings, particularly. We have different definitions of what a building is and a structure.
Okay.
Structures are those things like pergolas, decks, that type of thing.
You can't have.
Buildings are everything that's enclosed.
So if, if I have a shed, a garage, my house, I can't have a pergola, or I could?
You could, yes.
Okay, then could, could I have like a plastic shed?
Plastic shed is still under the normal building regulations.
That would be under the building, so that would constitute like a third shed?
Correct, yes, yeah.
Don't send those guys by my house, okay? So, no, no plastic, plastic sheds, even if they're small, like a.
If it's their pri, so if, if, if it's just their, we view sheds as sheds, no matter material use, if it's an enclosed building of any kind, it's a building.
It's got doors on it, and it's got, it's a shed. If it's even just a four-by-four one, that's considered a shed.
Yes.
How do you differentiate between a shed and a garage?
In our definitions, I believe we do.
Because somebody could come in, you know, if it's, if the shed is too restrictive, and they don't have street access, actually, I'm going to build a garage, not a shed.
That's the hook. They need, if it's a garage, it has to have access to a roadway of some kind, for a car to come in and out.
That's not true.
In our current code?
Well, my neighbor, my neighbor has a garage that, that they built and, and does not have a driveway or anything.
Well, it should.
17, 17 West Naperville Road, they have a double garage, and the village would not allow them to put the driveway, because they built that garage in the backyard. So it's grass to that, to that driveway.
Noted.
And then, and then what they've done is they put a double door on their one-car garage, and then he, the previous owner would drive through the grass and go in the garage, because the village wouldn't allow the driveway, but they allowed the structure.
I'm personally unaware, so I don't know.
Yeah, that's 17 West Naperville Road. I mean, it's, it's there.
My only point is, is that we do differentiate between the shed.
Right.
And a garage having street access.
Correct.
That way, somebody can't come in and want to oversize something.
We've had, we've had discussions, I've personally have had discussions where that was the sticking point.
Okay, good.
So, so that new one they're building there, that will have street access on Blackhawk?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It has a drive, the driveway goes back.
All the way to the back? Okay. But then like the one on West End does not, unless it goes to the alley, which I wouldn't know that. Could it be to the alley?
So we allow alley access.
Alley access, that's fine.
That, that make, that's the same thing as having.
Yeah, and that's like I say, I don't know that. That one could be on the alley, because it's, it's to the back. Interesting.
See what you're getting into?
Well, what would you consider then for a max for a shed? Like how much more bigger?
Well, I still think it should go back to the, how big is the house, and the lot coverage. Because if you have just a two-car garage, and you're attached garage to your house, and you have no room to put bikes, kids, toys, whatever, you should be able to build a shed in the back.
Well, you can build this.
That's bigger than 12 by 12.
So you think it should be?
It should be regulated by the surface area, either by the building's surface area.
But just a clarification, if I came for a garage permit, like I have to do the concrete, the footing, all that. If I do a shed permit, I could build that on a deck, right?
You could put it on the grass.
So you would still need like an anchoring system and the such. We'd make probably recommendations that you install on a concrete.
But doesn't need a pad?
Not for zoning purposes. I'm unaware of the requirements for construction. I rarely see any that are just on the grass anymore. They're usually on a concrete pad of some kind.
Sort of like Chris's point. Sort of like Chris's point, could you, in theory, build a 24 by 24 shed?
Currently?
Yeah.
No.
Well, I mean, if we, no, not currently, if it's 144, if we expanded it, so could somebody build a garage on the grass?
That would be determined on, so if it's a garage itself...
Shed, I guess it would be at that point, you know?
At that point, we would be looking at what, what limit would we want to set on it? So if we do it based on a percentage of like lot area or building, or the primary building itself, we'd want to cap it at some point. Maybe the cap point is, can't be larger than what a, a, a single-car garage may be. I think, I have some. So generally, to fit a car into a garage, you got like roughly 300 square feet if you want a truck to fit in there.
I agree with Commissioner La Boy around raising, well, I, I agree with actually an earlier point more so than anything around, you know, everything is kind of intertwined and these all affect one another, because, you know, if we look at it, if, if you're asking us to weigh in right now, again, it's like, do we want them sheds to be bigger? Like, well, are they also looking, is the consultant also looking at changing overall lot coverage?
No.
No, okay, well, that's good to know, I feel like that's good to establish if it's, because if we're at 35, because if it's going to be bigger, then it's like, all right, well maybe we can allow a little bit more. I feel like, you know, a lot of this is dictated by the lot a person has at the end of the day. So allowing more doesn't always mean somebody's going to be able to take advantage of it just because of lot coverage requirements. I mean, I'm in, in favor of being more flexible to homeowners to do not whatever on their property, but, you know, allow more flexibility, but they obviously still have to operate within the parameters of just regular land use or lot coverage.
You know, the, the other problem we have is, is we have lots in town that are very deep, 300 feet deep. What we don't want to do is just base it on, you know, the, the coverage, because you can end up with a shed that, like Carol's saying, that's enormous.
Yeah.
Still meet the code. So I, I'm okay with putting a limit on square footage.
Yeah, that's probably...
For a shed, but not having a 144 square feet.
I mean, because yeah, I just looked on Tough Sheds website, and one of their models, the biggest one, 720 square feet.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a massive shed.
I mean, that's an apartment.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
No, I mean, I don't think anybody has, nobody probably has a lot that would meet the requirements to build that more often, most likely. I mean, there's maybe a couple in town with a house and everything else that people have coverage-wise that would warrant them to, to build that, but, yeah, I don't know.
Well, I mean, wouldn't the majority of our homes qualify that don't have alleys on the, on the other side of Naperville Road? I mean, those are all 350 deep, right? I mean, those would probably all qualify, right?
If, if we base it on the lot area, yeah, probably, yeah. If we don't set a cap on it.
So if you look at a 24 by 24 garage, and you divide it by two for a shed, that's 288 square feet. You know, a normal size, just for cars.
Yeah.
So instead of 144, you know, that's something, is it 300 square feet max for a shed?
Yeah.
You know, if, if you do that.
So what I'm hearing generally, and I know not everybody's weighed in, but what I'm hearing generally is, we want to allow a little bit more for the sheds, up to a certain limit, and maybe we base it, again, on a percentage of the building itself or the lot itself, but there is going to be a cap of some kind.
For sure.
Is that generally what I'm hearing?
That sounds good.
Okay.
So shed for 300 square feet, that's 14 by 20, 20, you know, something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they sell 16 by 20, I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
You'd have to, I mean, that's 320, but yeah, you can start splitting hairs on...
Any other discussions on that?
It just seems so complicated, we should hire a consultant.
That's what I'm saying, but that's... Well, you know, I, I tend to think that, you know, there's lots that are very large in town, 300 feet deep, and then there's lots within some, it is like my lot is a pie lot, and it's very small, it's one of the smallest lots, well, not, well, it's small, and restrictive because of the geometry, because it's a pie-shaped lot. And difficult, you know, for, for people that own those pieces too. And, you know, for them, for those, those people at R3 that have a really, the absolute minimum lot size, and, and they have, they, they committed, they buy a house, they want to put a shed there, you don't need the numbers, you're going to have to come to get a variance. But, you know, you should be able to put a shed in your property, no matter what size.
I agree, yeah, regardless.
It is, you should be able to put a shed in your property, put the lawnmower in, you know, if, if your garage doesn't fit anymore, any storage space on the side, you know, you should be able to do that.
Anybody can, just to be clear, right, anybody can build a shed?
As long as they're meeting everything else.
Yeah, right.
What I'll, what I'll say to your point, because I think it's a good point, I get calls all the time where people will say, you only allow me to have this size garage, I can't fit my lawnmower in either my garage or the biggest shed, because they have a riding lawnmower of some kind.
Yeah.
That's a common thing I hear from residents, as anecdotal point.
Yeah.
So, okay. So I have, have those...
Increase the size.
Yes. Have direction to give for the consultant. So we also have these two items, which staff and our village attorney have gone back and forth on many a times discussing them through permits and the like. We have pergolas and gazebo's. So pergolas are actually listed in our permitted use table, our permitted encroachment table. So they're allowed in a rear yard. Pergolas as policy and through what we determine what a pergola is in this case, is a structure that has usually four pillars, and then on the top has an open roof, not a closed roof. Okay? There's no maximum size requirement, we see it a lot on decks, they don't have to meet the minimum setback from buildings. So buildings have a 10-foot requirement, we're not looking at changing that for buildings. Pergolas and other structures don't have those requirements to be 10 feet away from the primary structure or detached garage or shed. Additionally, we have gazebo's that are not outlined specifically in our code, they're not explicitly stated, they don't have a definition, there's no mention of gazebo's in our code. I've had multiple residents ask about them. Currently, we, we view them as a structure, and they're only permitted in what we call the buildable area, so they have to meet the same setbacks as a primary building, so the house itself. It can't be anywhere in any yard of any kind.
Wait, say that again?
So it can't be in a yard of any kind. When I say yard, I'm talking about zoning required yards, so that's six feet from each prop, side property line, 35 feet from the front, 20, usually 20% from the rear.
Did you include the, you know, all these things that are, you can buy at, at Costco or whatever, these temporary, like metal frame with cloth cover?
Yeah, kind of like a pavilion.
Over top of your tables, is that, or is that where you're...
So what I'm looking at specifically is what I, what I said, open roof, there's no coverings of any kind. For the pergolas, gazebo's, yes. So gazebo's would be the ones that have a cover.
What category would that fall into to go buy a, a tent structure over the, over your...
So currently, we have nothing.
Okay.
That defines it specifically.
But that would not be included.
That's part of the issue.
Nor should we, right? I mean, if you want to go buy one of those at Home Depot and put it on your deck with a cloth thing, I shouldn't have to go get a permit for it.
And I don't know, I, I can't speak to if it requires a permit or not, I don't know offhand. The only time I've seen it come across my desk for review is when it's a structure made of wood of some kind, they're anchoring it to the ground or the deck or something.
So then the fire department code for, for, for any open fire pit, I believe, is 15 yards from any structure, including fences, correct?
I think that's generally correct, but I think it may be a little less.
It's 15 feet.
15 feet, I'm sorry, 15 feet?
Yeah.
Is that not 15 yards, I missed, 15 feet? So then that obviously applies to any of those gazebo's or any of those things too.
I believe so, but I would have to double check it.
That's the one thing that, when we talk codes, I think there's 10 houses in Westmont that can have fire pits. That, that are illegal, you know what I mean? Because if you have a fenced-in yard, it's very difficult to have a, a fire pit, you know, or a deck or anything like that, where you're 15 foot, I have a fairly large yard, and it, it's hard for me to get my fire pit 15 foot away from something, you know?
Are you saying that a pergola can't be on your front porch?
It would have to meet the setbacks, so it couldn't be within 35 feet of your front property line, technically.
Okay, but it could be on your porch.
If you have a porch that is farther back than that, then you could, if it's in, in what we call the buildable area.
So it had to be 15 feet from the sidewalk?
No, so 35, so your front yard is generally, if we, let's say sidewalk, usually your sidewalk is a foot away from the property line. You'd have to be 35 feet from that front property line for many of these accessory structures.
Unless, unless you have an old tree in your yard, then you can only be 15. So again, all these can be varied, and, and that's, you know, we, we just had that on Grant Street, you know, when that old tree was there, they didn't want to cut down, they made that one only 15 foot from, from there.
And those were, some cases were, if it's a unique situation, unique lot, you would still see those variances come through if they wanted to do that, right? So, back to your point, 35 feet from the front property line is where you could start looking at putting a pergola or accessory structure of some kind. But it is allowed in the rear yard, basically anywhere, you just have to be six feet from the side property line in those cases.
So Scott, just between pergolas and gazebo's, what's, what's the ask? What are, what are you asking us to weigh in on?
So first, do you want any restrictions other than the ones listed for pergolas? So currently, they're just, no maximum size limit, they can be as big as the deck if need be, we don't view it in lot coverage calculations at all, because they're not going into the ground for flat work or something like that.
That's fine.
And do you, do we feel comfortable with the yard requirements? So they're permitted in the rear yard, they're not permitted on the side yard, so they have to meet the six-foot side yard setback and the 35-feet front yard setback in the R3 district.
What's the side yard setback?
Six feet.
Oh, okay. But you, if you had your house, if you wanted, you could put it next to it if it was half 35.
It should be consistent with the detached garage criteria that we just talked about.
That's what I'm asking, so currently it's not. So that's what I'm asking, should we, should we move it more in line?
So if you could put a detached garage three feet away from your lot line, you can't put a pergola 15 feet or...
Uh, six feet.
Or six feet.
Six feet, you'd have to put six.
Just make them all the same. I'd rather have a pergola there than a garage there.
So you, yeah, you're saying...
Is a pergola more restrictive than a, than a garage?
So you're saying basically that detached garages technically have a greater impact on the neighbors than a pergola would, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. Now, I'm going to throw something out here, because normally, when there's a pergola involved, there's usually some gathering happening.
Something else, yeah.
So now you're, you're, you're thinking, if you think about it, you're now pushing, so patios currently can't be six, or three feet from the property line.
You know, I...
It's, it's minute, but...
Garage too, you know, the guy, there's a guy in Oakwood that he lives in his garage, yeah. It's, it's like he has everything out there, he cooks out there, eats out there, watches TV out there, yeah. I love the guy.
More and more common.
I love him over there.
I mean, it's more and more common, you see it more and more, these garages are converted over to, to living.
Living space, yeah.
Or at least bears watching areas, you know what I mean?
I just don't think, you know, that if you have a detached garage in your backyard that's three feet away from the lot line, that's what we're talking about, as we just talked about, we have a pergola that's, has to be six feet away. It's like these rules just get real deep with criteria.
And now, now you're understanding a little bit about frustration from staff, we're reading through the code.
Yeah.
Because we have to go, we have to look at that, we have to go talk to our attorney to figure out what exactly our requirements are, that type of stuff. That's what we're trying to fix here.
Yeah, avoid people having to come in for...
So what I'm, what I'm hearing for the pergolas at least, is that we want to be a little less restrictive for setbacks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement.
Okay. And no size limit, nothing like that?
No.
Do we feel any different about gazebo's? So...
I don't, but I don't.
No.
The way, the way we look at...
It's, it's just a closed roof, basically, is the difference?
So it has a roof normally, sometimes it has some type of sidewall around it, or it can be open, like a pavilion. Do we feel differently because now it's roofed, there should be some further restrictions, or do we feel the same as a pergola?
Same.
Same, because the garage, detached garage is roofed.
The detached garage.
Got it. This could write. Yeah, it'd be good. Yours is down too.
Is it?
It might be my paper.
Yeah.
Okay. The last thing I bring right now, related to structures, is fencing. So we've seen fence variances every so often here. Currently, our consultant is just going to be transplanting what our current code is related to it. We differentiate between open and solid fencing in two ways. So we have two different types of open fencing currently, one is 80% open, one is 50% open. When I say open, that means the distance between those...
Slats.
Yeah, slats. When it's 50% open, it can be usually closer to the property line on side yards that are adjoining the street, those are the corner lots, they have to be made out of a certain material, raw iron or aluminum fencing. And then we have what we call, or I may have flipped that, 50% open, yeah, that's 50% open, oh, sorry, that was the 80% open is aluminum fencing, they can be usually up to four feet in most yards. And then we have 50% open, which is your normal picket fencing, wood picket fencing usually, although we see more and more vinyl fencing nowadays. Those can be up to three feet in the front and those side corner lots, and they can go up to the property line for those, for those two open ones. For the solid fencing, it, they can be, they're not permitted in the front yard at all for solid fencing. They're not permitted in the rear or side yard adjoining streets or on the corners like we've seen, unless they're a step back 15 feet from the front, from those property lines, and they have to be behind the primary structure. So I don't think we have issues with the open fencing standards, I haven't gotten many inquiries on it, we've never seen a variance come in that I've seen in my records for open fencing. So really, discussion here is, how close do we think the solid fencing type should be to these corner lots, or on these corner lots to the property line? So like I said, currently, we've seen, just down the street here, somebody came in for a variance for a six-foot fence, that was basically up to the property line with very limited setbacks, I think about two or three feet.
Is that the...
They provided some landscaping and the such. Do we feel that should be something that's implemented into our code, so those type of properties don't have to come in to ask for those variances? Should we be doing that?
I do.
On a case-by-case basis?
I also think we should address the, some of the busier streets, like we've had height requests like on 55th Street, and I think we should build that in, if we have properties on major thoroughfares, you're allowed to go higher without coming in for a variance, that just saves us on a variance.
Yeah, so you're, you're correct, so when we have those properties, technically, they have two front yards, they have two front edges.
Yes.
They're through lots, is what we call them. You see it a lot on 63rd, 55th.
Yes.
Currently, our code doesn't allow them to have 6 feet on those, along those roads. You see it, they do.
They come in, yeah.
A lot of them do.
How many variances have we given?
So for fence, for fence variances, we've done about, I think it was 36 total, from back to 85. Now, that doesn't give you a lot of information, because they're all different. Again, variances usually have some type of standard they're meeting when they're approved. So it's not always a great gauge to base off variances in particular, because those have to meet those special, unique standards. However, I get inquiries on it all the time for fencing. It is one of those permits I kick back most often, because we have restrictive fencing requirements for setbacks compared to other communities. Now, other communities also have different setbacks for commercial versus residential. Ours are all normally coupled together, for the most part. We do have special regulations for commercial, they can usually go up to 7 feet in some cases for unsightly conditions. But really, they're treated mostly the same right now. But getting back to your point, I don't disagree that maybe it's something we should implement if you're on a major thoroughfare, if your rear yard is on a major thoroughfare or your side yard, they should be able to have some type of barrier. Do we have any discussions on that in particular?
It's a good idea, I think it avoids someone, it saves everybody time, the property owner and us.
On solid fences.
Solid 6-foot fences.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not looking at raising, staff isn't looking at raising the cap for above 6 feet, we've seen. That's pretty constant across most municipalities.
Yeah.
For residential.
Yeah, you don't have to go over that.
That would be awful.
Are you saying we're more restrictive than others when it comes to the setback on, let's say, corner lots?
Correct.
We are.
But aren't corner lots so different? I mean, you know, there's corner lots with the alleys, corner lots...
Correct, yes, yeah.
I don't know if you could make one set of rules that would be for all the corner lots.
So we've seen with some of those variance requests where they've, because of, they're on an alleyway in a street, and then they have a front street as well, they have basically their whole side yard is used as their rear yard because of the way the house is oriented, things like that. We've seen where we've been more attuned to allowing them to go up to 6 feet on the side property line by having some type of cut, so people can see on the alleyway.
Yeah, well, one block south of here, we did that. So the garbage truck coming out can see the traffic coming and...
Or pedestrians on the sidewalk.
True.
Now, that's something we can look at. I haven't seen it in many other codes in the area, so it'd be something we'd be looking at basically to do here. We do have a lot of alleyways in the downtown. So maybe if we're looking at that for the alleyway portion, we'd say you need to cut it back to a certain point of a corner vision triangle, is what we call it.
Yeah. Is that something that would be in the code or something that...
It'd be something in the code.
That stat, okay, got it. I wasn't sure if that's something that you guys would do at your discretion when they'd come in for the permit?
So what we've done for some of those variance requests, we've told them, look, it's gonna, if you come in and you just want to corner it out for those alleyways, there may be issues. You may want to see about creating some type of vision. Because we have concerns at staff, if there's a kid running down the street on a sidewalk, they can't see it, see them coming down or on a bike. You don't want those, you don't want children in the roadway instead, because it's not safe to go across the alleyway for some reason, so...
What are other, do you have other municipalities setbacks from...
I don't have them here currently, but looking through them earlier today, where for all the other setbacks, we're in general agreement with most villages. Some villages allow 6 feet almost anywhere when you get towards some of the more, what I'm gonna call rural areas, out towards the...
I think it's just, it's safety more than anything, right? And letting a corner lot build too close to the, you know, basically to the sidewalk.
So what are your thoughts on, this is for everybody, on if the house goes up to... So we allow some R3 properties, their house can go up to 25 feet on these sides. If we say, some houses go even farther, especially in the downtown, we could look at, it can't go past a certain point from that house. Or we could say, just put in a minimum limit or maximum limit from the street.
With fence?
For the fence, for a 6-foot solid fence. We could put, like in the current code, we have a 15-foot setback if it's on the rear only.
Can we just call it the building line?
Say that one more time?
Can we just call it the building line?
We can call it a building line, that works. We could do it, implement it like that, but then you may be restricting somebody's backyard, and they're gonna still have a big portion, because a lot of houses do meet the required setback, especially if they're newer, of 35 feet from the side property line or 25 feet in some districts.
It might be good too to have, like we've had fences where, like rear yard fences that are not on a corner lot that border sidewalk. And then there's an issue, do you provide that landscape buffer or not?
And that was gonna be my next question, yeah.
So the landscape buffer, I think, should be there, in my opinion. But, you know, when you put a fence right on the walk, now you've got weeds, you've got all kinds of stuff going on along the fence line at the walk. So if you're on a street and you're allowed per the code to put the... It's not, it's not in a restrictive area as far as a corner lot being on a building line, you should be able to put the fence pretty close, but leave a small landscape area.
Some type of buffer so you're not blocking 6 feet next to a wall.
Right.
And that's something we could do, so it could be just a requirement in the zoning code that they have to install some type of landscaping. We would basically say the landscaping has to be a certain height limit of some kind. That is a route we could go, although, again, enforcement of that can become an issue at that point.
Yeah, but when you, they commit for permit and the fence is right on the sidewalk, it's controllable when you issue the permit, not a matter of...
Correct.
What Harold's talking about, other situations where it's actually code enforcement issues of enforcing other, other stuff we have, so... But in this particular case, if someone's gonna build a fence, they gotta commit for a fence permit. So it's controllable.
Correct.
So you don't have to worry about the enforcement, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, because you're gonna have a permit, you're gonna have the final. You're gonna have a final to, you know, whether or not, yeah, right. Whether or not it gets maintained is, you know, a different story, but that's always the thing.
Yeah.
And code enforcement will tell you, you know, the backyards and stuff are real tough. You know, front yards and stuff is easy.
Even from a maintenance standpoint, you know, if we have a snowstorm, and you're trying to plow snow, and the fence is right, the sidewalk is, the fence is right on the sidewalk, well, it's pretty tough to...
Yeah, agree.
Actually do the snow removal when it's right on the line.
People still remove their snow on the side. So are the alleys, the alleys have no setback?
No, if it's an alleyway, it's considered, we don't consider it a street in our code. They're a different type of roadway.
Right.
So they're not considered a frontage because it's rear. It's treated as a rear, yeah, it's treated as a rear lot line. Usually, there's about a foot in some of the older areas between the alleyway and the property line, but some of the, some of the older, older areas.
I don't think Central Business District has a foot, yeah.
I was gonna say, Central Business District is unique in that way, that it goes right up to it.
Yeah, to Chris's point, the snowplows take them out, they take them out every time, you know? It really does.
Any other discussions on it? Because what I'm hearing is we should reduce the setback in some way.
Yes.
Some hard number. And if they want to exercise that specific thing on a side corner lot in the rear yard, they would, they could go to the building line or maybe further, but they need to have some type of landscape buffer.
Yeah.
So it's not right up against the sidewalk, and there's just some more room to maneuver.
If fence is bordering, bordering a sidewalk would require a small landscape buffer.
Okay. For alleyways, do we want to implement a requirement for a vision triangle of some kind?
I always thought that in the code there was a 25-foot sight distance triangle.
So there's a 55-foot distance requirement in our landscape ordinance, and that is only for streets. Alleyways aren't considered streets. So you are correct, your memory serves you right, but it's a little different.
I don't think it needs to be 55 feet, but sight distance is an issue, especially with garbage trucks and other things that are coming into the alley. Yeah, they're coming out of the street, you gotta be able to see. You're approaching a sidewalk typically when you're coming out of an alley, and so there should be some sort of sight triangle there, in my opinion. I don't, I think 55 feet's pretty excessive, but...
Yeah, that's, that's a requirement for even like, that's for like Ogden and some other...
Doesn't have to be...
Exactly.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be that big. Even 25 feet, or 20 feet is good enough, but it's something they should be able to see, because you don't want to come out and boom, you know, you're on the sidewalk and you can hit a carriage coming through or...
You may...
Carriage or whatever.
I turn into a Chicago type of thing where someone's beeping before coming out of the alleyway before.
Right, you should have a sight triangle.
And we do have a lot of children and pedestrians around Manning where that alley situation is all around there. So it's, I think they even have crossing guards at a few of the alleys, actually. So it's definitely something we want to be conscious of.
Yeah. In agreement. Okay. I have my direction for that. That's all I want to talk about tonight. We'll get into some of the broader topics other nights. Before we close, I want to introduce Adam. He's our new planner. If Adam wants to come up and just tell the commission...
He just quit after heard this conversation.
I put in my resignation.
Well, hello commissioners, yeah, as Scott said, my name's Adam Walsh. I'm the new planner with the Village of Westmont. I just graduated from the University of Illinois about a month ago with a degree in urban planning. So I feel very fortunate to come right out of school and have a job and to get, start working on all side of you. And I don't think I'm gonna quit just yet. I worked with the City of Naperville last summer, and when I was a high school student, I was the student rep for Naperville's planning and zoning commission. So I think I've seen the best and the worst of all sorts of commissions, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Welcome to Westmont.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Very.
All right.
So Adam does a lot on the permitting side of things, the daily tasks as well. But he will be slowly be coming to this commission as needed for some simpler cases and that type of thing. So you'll see his face around here, mostly in the back for now, though.
Are you able to share any of the other topics that, or do you not want to? I'm just more so just thinking...
I can, I can share some.
Educate myself on anything that I might not be fully up to speed on from current conditions.
Yeah, like I said, we're looking at some overhauls to zoning districts is the larger thing. Introduction of some type of public or institutional zoning district.
That's a good idea.
Some changes to the downtown. I recommend looking at the community development committee minutes, where we've covered a lot of these topics.
Do they post the minutes?
They'll be posted online after they're approved, which is at the following CDC. So right now, I believe there's at least two on the website that were approved minutes, they're available to the public.
Okay.
The most latest one is not yet, because it was a special meeting, but it'll be later on.
You may even want to suggest to Jamie that she circulates the approved minutes by email to the commissioners, so they don't have to individually circulate.
Yeah, I, we can have Jamie's or admin, I can have her send out those minutes that we talked about. Those meetings aren't recorded on YouTube or anything, so you have to look at the minutes to gain any information from it.
Incorrect, it was later corrected.
Any other questions related to...
Minutes.
So I'll be coming back with more discussion topics.
The minutes, yeah.
We'll slowly move into the public hearing phase. That's when we have residents that will come out and actually be able to speak on topics. Currently, we're just looking for direction, as the chair stated. That's why we have these discussions that aren't open for the public to comment, but they can listen in and develop their own opinions for the public hearing. Okay? Turn it back to the chair.
All right. Thank you, Scott, that was...
Revening.
Only slightly painful.
Slightly painful.
That's our final discussion item. Our next scheduled meeting of this commission is on the 2nd Wednesday of July, that'll be July 10th, just prior to the taste. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to bring up before adjournment? Then the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Thomas.
And I have a second from Barry. All in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned.